And then our non-public services area, this really looks at all of our resident students who attend schools that are outside of the district, so charter schools, private schools. With our resident area, private schools, we're also responsible for their nursing services, library services, some computer software services within there as well. So that is pretty steady, although you've seen it's over the last five years, there's a trend starting downward for students who are within their programs just due to enrollment of students out of those non-public schools and back into the district. The other piece for complementary revenues, it comes out of our title grants, so the four title grants are also handled within the office, although those funds are to be used across the district. What you're looking at here are this year's funds. The allocation for next year doesn't come till around July, and then the grant is finalized in August with proposed funding for next year. So Title I is only allocated to particular schools based on their free and reduced lunch status. Title II is for professional learning initiatives. Title III is for E&amp;L services, which, this is the first year that we've actually qualified to have that on our own, before we were working in conjunction with another district, but the number of students we have has elevated to us being able to have our own allocation. Title IV is for a well-rounded education, so there's some more flexibility there. We've used that for SEL programs, for safety. It can be used for some technology areas. And Titles II and IV are also shared amongst our private schools that reside within our district catchment. So a few accomplishments, just to highlight this year. Really having Vincent join us as our Coordinator of Equity and Inclusivity has been wonderful. His focus has really been, just these last few months since he's been with us, on building those relationships and understanding the culture within the district, and really being within the buildings to be able to provide support directly to our students, our administrators, working really closely with many of our large committees, with many of us here in central office. The Code of Conduct, which you've seen most recently and will be completed very soon. And I think one of the things that's helped as we've organized the department a little differently, with some different areas of focus, we've been able to be really planned and thoughtful around not just bringing things like the Code of Conduct forward, but then what's the rollout going to be with that? So something like the Code of Conduct, following it with some really thoughtful training for all of our staff, which will be coming up starting next week and moving in through Superintendent's Conference Day. And then similarly with our gender identity policy that we had this year, following that up with LGBTQ+ training for all of our staff to have access to. Some of that will start on Superintendent's Conference Day, also be happening throughout our secondary schools in faculty meetings as well. And one of the other big things that happened this year is the creation of threat assessment teams at each of our schools. So all nine schools have identified a threat assessment team that are just starting the training process, which will also move into the summer when we have some more time to be able to focus on that training, and we'll be bringing in a consultant we've been working with for several years to be able to continue moving that forward, so those teams are ready starting next school year. And then just gathering some data this year from our students and from our teachers around different supports that they need through our Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which you saw some feedback from, and then also doing check-in survey with our teachers to be able to provide support at the building and at the district level. The things you see on this slide, in terms of additional accomplishments, I really, I have to say, are the majority, the work of Stephanie Barg, who is our Student Services Specialist. Her area of focus this year really has been on social-emotional learning and mental health. So the real accomplishment here, in addition to all of these pieces, is her ability to get into the buildings, to be part of those teams, to be able to provide support, be a part of those conversations around what types of supports are out there. So she's really been a liaison between the buildings, between their mental health teams and administrators, to our community partnerships. So her work, particularly with the University of Rochester Medical Center, has allowed us to really use those consulting hours to build our own capacity, which is really what we want. So some of those groups, that C-Bits group that you see there, which is really around trauma in schools, that's really focused on COVID-19 and the trauma that's happened for some of our students due to that, are groups that have been able to be running with URMC clinicians and our own staff in order to build their capacity, so they can then run groups of that nature on their own. So some of those things have really just been huge accomplishments, that I think because she's had that time to really be able to focus on SEL specifically, that those things have been able to move forward, and building teams know exactly who they can go to if they have questions about what types of supports might be available for certain students or families. The other one I would really highlight, that we were just talking about today, under suicide prevention, she was able to collaborate with our mental health teams and some of our community resources to be able to create binders that are living in every school, that contain all the resources, and really a map to follow through the suicide prevention timeline. So everything from prevention, intervention, post-vention, with all of the forms right there for people to be able to have access to. So as Dr. Heatley was sharing there, regionally, she told us today that many districts were using that as an exemplar to be able to create similar resources for their mental health teams to be able to have access to in their district. So a lot to be proud of there. As we're looking through all of the work, and as we've been just discussing the budget and how we're all focusing in different areas, one of our considerations is, does this work really fall more in alignment with what an administrator would take on? And with the difference between looking at a TOSA salary versus something like a coordinator, we could really have somebody who would focus more on this work and some of the upcoming work that I'm going to talk about in a moment, in a way that they could really see it through to fruition and realizing just the heavy lift that we have here with the upcoming and current social-emotional and mental health needs of our students and our staff. So the differential there would be probably between $7,000 and $10,000 if we removed a TOSA, a teacher on special assignment position, and replaced it with a coordinator for our social-emotional learning. Some of the challenges, I'm going to stick with that SEL lens for a moment, really, as over the years, we've done a shape assessment. It's a school health assessment, performance evaluation, that looks at mental health supports across the district. And we know that some of the gaps that have come out is just having something really consistent at each level across buildings to be able to assess mental health needs and follow through consistently. So lots of great things are happening, but they tend to be different depending on what building or level you're at. So being able to really use those district-based supports in consistent ways, and really support our mental health teams in consistent ways, with resources, with curriculum alignment, with assessment tools, is something that we're hoping to do more of moving forward. And then obviously, a large challenge has just been that really the time and energy put toward the actual COVID response, bringing in Testing Clinic, which is going on right now, really looking at the contact tracing, which has been happening all along the way, managing different cases, working with families, talking them through supports, working with Monroe County, and just all the different changes in protocols, as we all know, which have been changing on a daily basis. So just staying updated on those has certainly been a challenge this year. Just going to highlight a couple anticipated projects. That piece about really having some district-wide SEL structures and systems in place is really about having a vision for transformative SEL and equity. And what that really means is focusing on that sense of belonging, on building those relationships in a strategic way, and then having teams and supports in place that allow the mental health staff that we do have, and the really strong team that we've built, to be able to work successfully and efficiently without burning people out. So that would look like things like a universal screening tool, and having actual curricular goals that are linked to the content that our teachers are already using, but something that's a little more cohesive, that we know can give equitable access to all of our students, to consistent SEL strategies and approaches. We're going to have ongoing community engagement. We've had several opportunities for families to come in and interact with us on a variety of topics, and want to continue to be able to do that. Again, linking the SEL and the equity work, continuing our professional learning, and the threat assessment implementation for the threat assessment teams next year would be another pretty large anticipated project that we think will have a great impact and be able to support our teams in a different way. And so with that, if anybody has any questions?
I would just say thank you, Shayna, to you and your department for an amazing transition for this year, with all the transitions internally that you're contending with, but the focus on mental health and threat assessment and all SEL work, coupled with all of the unknowns, has been nothing short of exemplary this year, so thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'll be presenting to you the proposed Special Education Department budget. Before I do that, I just want to share that tomorrow is Spread the Word Inclusion Day. So this is a youth-led global campaign to promote inclusion. Both of our high schools, through their interact clubs and best buddies clubs, are very involved in engaging students through posters and taking pledges over the next couple of weeks, so hopefully you'll be hearing more about that. So just for a little bit of background, our special education programs and services are arranged for all preschool-age students who reside in the district, who are eligible, and also all school-age students who either reside in the district or attend one of the private schools within our district boundaries. We also work to foster an inclusive culture. We're working to provide supports in general education settings as much as possible for students, and also supporting inclusive clubs and activities. So you'll see that we have been trending gradually increasing, the number of students who receive special education services in the district continues to increase. This year, we have just over 700 students, which represents about 13% of our total district population at this time. We also just, this is just one quick data point that we monitor to kind of track if we are moving in the right direction with providing adequate resources in general education settings to support our students with disabilities as much as possible. You'll see that this year, we have continued to increase the percentage of students who are in general education settings for 80% or more of the school day. So the special education budget at the district level has three separate categories. The first category is the Special Education Office, which includes the District Office Team, which is both administrative and clerical support, overseeing the district's special education processes and programs. This also covers things like interpreters, contracts, legal fees, as well as our summer work that happens in our office. You'll see that our proposed budget for next year, we are flat in every area with the exception of contracted services. That area we're budgeting, we're looking at a slight increase in, primarily because as we've encountered more staffing challenges, we've had to reach out to private agencies here and there to help us support services in specific situations. So we're continuing to anticipate needing to have access to some flexible options to support us during those times. The second category is speech-language and adapted physical education. So the bulk of our special education staff are reflected in the building-based budgets. So special education teachers and paraprofessionals, for example, are reflected in each building's budget. The centralized services are speech-language therapists and adapted physical education teachers. We have 13.6 speech-language therapists, and that will remain the same for next year. Adapted physical education teachers, we range between three and four. Those numbers change throughout the year based on individual student needs. This also includes the supplies and materials for those two areas, and allows for reimbursement of the speech-language pathologist licenses, which allows us to receive Medicaid reimbursement for those services. So the increase in this area for next year is just related to staff salary increases. The FTEs are staying the same. The final category, which is the largest for special education, includes all of our outside placements and services. So this is all of our BOSI's special education services, as well as New York State-approved special education schools. We contract for all of our district's physical therapists and occupational therapists through BOSI's, so all of those salaries are included in this particular budget area, as well as the BOSI's programs that we access for students who require full-day programs, and the BOSI's services that we provide to the students who are attending private schools in Pittsburgh. So special education also has a few areas in which we receive budget support. So similar to the title grants that Shayna referenced, we also receive some federal grants to help us offset special education costs. These are the budget history, the allocation history for the past five years. Similar to the title grants, we don't receive these allocations until later in the school year, sometimes as late as June or July. So we don't yet know the exact allocation we'll have for the upcoming school year, but you'll see that these numbers have been fairly flat over time. We also have a certain percentage that we need to distribute to the private schools in the district. In addition to that, we receive Medicaid reimbursement for certain medically necessary services. The amount that we received in the last school year was just over $77,000, which was an increase from the year before. And the final area of budget support is related to some special state aid categories for high-cost programs. So for the past school year 2021, we received just over $700,000 in special high-cost aid to support special education programs. This was a reduction over the prior year due to some of the impact of the remote learning period for us during the beginning of COVID. So some of our successes or accomplishments related to the special education budget and programs for the current school year. We were able to return to full-time, in-person programs and services for all of our students within our in-district programs this year. We also continued to increase our general education access for students with disabilities as we've been able to provide the resources to support students adequately in general education. We also, this year, were able to return to all of our in-person inclusive activities, so meeting our best buddies clubs, were able to meet in person. Our unified sports have been able to resume, and this year we added a second unified sport by adding a bowling team. Some of the challenges that we've had this year, we've had some out-of-district placements, including BOSI's placements, who have had periods of remote instruction for some of our students, as a result of staffing challenges and quarantine-related challenges. So some of our students have had periods of time where they've been affected by remote instruction, which has then required some creative programming and service provision to help support them, both during that time of remote instruction, and then moving forward to make up for some of that time that they lost. We also, related to that, our BOSI's programs in particular have had significant staffing challenges, which has resulted in not being able to accept some of the students and having longer wait lists than normal. So that's been a challenge for us as well. So to summarize, these are the three areas, and the proposed budget for the upcoming school year. You'll see overall, there's a very slight increase, and the increases that you do see are primarily related to the contractual salary increases. We've been maintaining the number of students that we place in out-of-district programs, so there's not a significant increase there. Any questions?
Elizabeth, if I could just share, I think one of the most telling graphs that you shared was the amount of students with disabilities that spend 80% or more of their time in our Gen Ed programs is outstanding. It's something to really be proud of. I'm certainly proud of it as a superintendent and proud of our staff for supporting it. It's remarkable, and the amount that I feel that our students with special needs are included in everything inside and outside of school is extraordinary. The, all of the unified sports are a highlight, not only for us, but for families, for their peers, and for themselves. And, boy, we talk about making a difference in people's lives, and it's what your department does every day, so thank you for all you do.
Thank you, and we're excited to be bringing back our middle school unified basketball program this spring as well, so that's on the horizon. Thank you.
Okay, next up, I'm here to share with you highlights of the curriculum and instructional budget. So again, I share this with you every year as we talk about our budget, because our mission around our curriculum really does anchor our work and the decisions that we make in my office on a routine basis, because we are all about preparing our students for their future, no matter what their future holds for them. So an overview of the responsibilities that fall under my area when we think about the budget. Certainly, the biggest area would be the oversight and support of all curriculum and assessment work for the district, and that work is, to a very large extent, led by an amazing team of 24 standards leaders, who are experts in their field, have a great degree of credibility with their colleagues, and who I rely on on a daily basis to really lead this work in some very significant ways. We have certainly, with their support and their leadership, have put a renewed focus on integrating equity goals into all facets of our curriculum and instructional work, and you'll see some of that as I share some of our celebrations as we move forward. Other areas of responsibility are textbook and supplementary resource acquisition, and that's a big chunk of my budget, professional learning opportunities, and we'll have some information here about some of the BOSI services that support our programming. So a little bit of history, in the 510 area of the budget, which is the curriculum and instruction line, that really is the budget that is directly out of my office, that covers just two FTEs, myself and my assistant, as well as salaries for curriculum writing and steering committee payments, so that's work that our teachers are doing beyond their regular contractual assignment. This budget also includes the district textbook purchasing code, which those expenditures are offset every year by some textbook aid from New York State. This includes travel and conference to support professional learning for all members of our staff, all buildings, teachers, et cetera, and some of our BOSI services that are specific to our curricular programs. And you can see that we're holding very flat in this budget line. The 511 code is our standards code, so this is the code that includes the stipends and salaries for all 24 of our standards leaders, most of whom are still teaching in the classroom, either full-time or part-time, and we have three standards leaders who are on full-time release right now. They have, they just, again, they're my right-hand people, they do so much incredible work. 540, this is our professional development line, this is essentially the teacher center here, so this is three FTEs, which is our teacher center director, our instructional materials coordinator, and the teacher center assistant, print services, supplies, and membership. We are fortunate in this district to have such a strong partnership with our teacher center that is unusual for many districts across the region and across the state, where our teachers have access to incredible, high-quality professional learning, and the teacher center is really seen as an integral part of all of the work that we do in the district, and it's just not like that in a lot of places, so it's always worth celebrating, I think. And then the BOSI's code 470 covers several different areas. I've just given you a sampling here, and some of these are sort of very directly related to the curriculum, the elementary BOSI's kits that support the BOSI's curriculum, or the science curriculum, excuse me, across all of our elementary buildings. And then you see, you know, urban-suburban costs there, non-public textbook coordination, there's kind of a smattering of things that fall under this general code. You see a big spike in this code last year, and that's where we put monies to offset what we anticipated would be significant costs for students who continue to require remote learning this school year. We're fortunate that we've actually had only a very, very small handful, like less than a handful, of students who have required fully remote services this year, and we've moved to covering those costs through some of the federal COVID-related grants that we have right now. So that's a big spike in the 21-22 school year budget, and that comes out as we move forward. And then finally, we have the budget for summer school, and this is for students who need access to summer school services, primarily for credit recovery. We do not typically have students attend the BOSI's Cooperative Summer School for new course. We allow access to this for kids who need credit recovery, or the opportunity to sit for a Regents exam that they have not successfully passed yet. We are proposing a slight increase in this budget for next year, as we anticipate perhaps a little greater need for summer school this year due to some of the learning gaps. Our budget is primarily supported by the property tax levy. We do get some BOSI's aid and some instructional materials aid that comes through our office. So some of the celebrations to share with you out of our office, connected to some of these budget proposals, we've certainly seen a much greater alignment of our essential curriculum and instruction across all grade levels, all departments, all buildings in the last couple of years, much greater alignment than we've had in previous years. I do consider this honestly one of the greatest silver linings of COVID. It required, COVID put us in a position of teachers really needing to focus together, work closely together on what the most essential learning for their curriculum is and was, and that's provided much greater alignment. We've done a lot of work with teams of teachers over the last couple of years, creating instructional roadmaps that really outline those essentials, align some pacing around those essentials, without turning them into mandated scripts and really tight pacing guides, but really a sense of focus, so all kids are able to access the most essential learning for the course, no matter who their teacher is. We've also done significant work, and this is work that certainly will and needs to continue, on aligning our curriculum to the New York State Culturally Responsive and Sustaining Education Framework. The biggest focus here for us so far has been in English and Social Studies, and I've shared some of the highlights of that work with you in the past. We've begun to do important work around the integration of the New York State Social Emotional Learning Benchmarks, which Shayna referenced, and which Stephanie Barg has been hopeful with, into our academic curriculum, as well as the New York State Computer Science and Digital Fluency Standards, which are K-12 and are expected to be integrated in all disciplines over the next few years. So that's a big lift that cuts across all areas. And then we're also engaged, and this is a real celebration, and again, some much needed and appreciated work, done a lot of work in the last several months in the development of a protocol for the review of all instructional materials, and that protocol includes a very comprehensive review of materials through the lens of diversity and representation. And I look forward to being able to share that product with you when it's complete later this spring. Additional celebrations, and again, this one goes back, I think, to COVID, provided us an opportunity to take a big leap here, with students and teachers embracing instructional technology tools in ways that they certainly were not quite as enthusiastically or knowledgeably in the past. And most notably here is the success of our first year of the one-to-one laptop initiative, grade six through nine. We've had multiple platforms for professional learning provided to our staff, something, again, that we were not doing prior to COVID, but we now make professional learning opportunities available to staff in person asynchronously, asynchronously. available to staff in person, asynchronously, synchronously, blended models, et cetera. So, teachers are able to access learning in ways and times that make sense for them and meet the needs of the content. And our teachers are extremely appreciative of the variety and the differentiated way that we're now able to present professional learning opportunities. And we've certainly had critical conversations taking place across multiple venues around all of our equity goals and their impact on our curriculum and assessment. Moving forward, we will be continuing certainly the work on revising and updating all of our curriculum relative to the New York State Framework. And our commitment to equity will continue the lift around the SEL benchmarks and the Computer Science and Digital Fluency Standards. Those are both complicated to weave into all curricular areas, and so it's going to take some learning and some heavy lifting there. BOSI's has been a great partner in that work, especially relative to the Computer Science and Digital Fluency Standards. We look forward to growing our one-to-one laptop initiative and our continued offerings for professional learning on culturally responsive pedagogy. We are anticipating and we're seeing certainly right now and anticipate additional into the future some of those lingering COVID gaps with learning. And so, positioning our teachers to be able to provide tier-one interventions and differentiated instruction and the resources that they need to help kids close those academic gaps. And certainly, always at the forefront of our work is that social, emotional, and mental health work for our students and our staff. So, pulling it all together numbers-wise, these are the five big buckets of budgets that fall under my area, and so you can see the proposals for next year in each of those areas. The two big ones, five-ten, curriculum and instruction, you can see how that dollar amount breaks down, and it's about a, that total budget comes down to a hundred and fifty-three dollars per pupil, with the biggest areas going to salary and BOSI's and textbooks. The standards budget is ninety-six percent of that is salaries for, again, that's our salaries and stipends for our standards leaders, and then a little bit for their travel and conference supplies and membership fees. And when you wrap it all up together, you actually see a nice little decrease there in the overall with, when you put those five budget lines together. But it's only fair and transparent to acknowledge that that decrease primarily comes from pulling the monies that had put in, been put into the BOSI's code for remote learning now being pulled out. So, overall, we're pretty flat. Any questions?
Melanie, it'd been impossible to go through the last two years without you and your staff relative to making so many different transitions specific to COVID with all of the multiple meetings and planning and thinking and dissemination over everything, not only the, the learning models, but the content. And it's quite impressive coming out of this, the amount of balance that I think that we have now between autonomy and common essential curriculum and understandings across, across the board. I feel like we've, we've hit that sweet spot right now.
Yeah.
And it's pretty unique to us. So, thank, thank you for, for all you've done in, in your department.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, and thanks for having me. So, today, we're going to be talking about the instructional services, technology, the data team, and their assessment, and as well as the technology support through BOSI's. Matt Wachowski here behind me, we've got Jeff Kimmer, we're going to co-present this today. So, just some background information, and just to refresh your memory, Technology Services, we really support both the technical and the instructional systems that are leveraged throughout our district. That can be anything from a, a computer, tablet, phone, anything that's going to plug into your, your laptop, your desktop, peripherals, printers, servers, and wifi, anything that's you're seeing here today and then behind us. We also work with staff and students administration throughout the district, and my team provides a lot of high-quality professional development on a lot of the, the technology platforms that Melanie was talking about early, earlier. We support the integration of instructional technology within the curriculum and continue to refine our practices and learn more about the emerging trends of what's happening out there. We maintain our, our infrastructure throughout Pittsford schools, and we do that with an outstanding staff of around fourteen full-time members. That's myself, one administrative assistant, eight technicians, and four instructional technology people. We also have two audiovisual assistants at the, the two high schools that are shared throughout the elementaries and the middle schools, and we have one print shop manager that helps support our district as well as many other districts.
We call it here on the slides data and assessment, but I think most of you know us as the data team, and we're very proud of the work we do. Some of the work you see forward facing here vis-à-vis our presentations, the second bullet here talks about student assessment data. I know you see a lot of that in the form, Melanie presents that, but we also use a lot of that at building levels, I L T, I L C, central office. So, you may see some of that work here, but a lot of that work is used behind the scenes as well. We work in conjunction with our business office, and we make sure that the student attendance reports not only are good for them but good for the state of New York. And we certainly assist our secondary schools, all schools, but really focusing on the secondary schools when it comes to student scheduling and the complexities that come with that. We help with surveys. I've become very synonymous with surveys, but not all of them. Buildings, departments do their own, but we are always there on a support, we're looking on a table, we support everybody here. We, we know our role, and hopefully we play it well. A little bit different than most of the departments, we're a very small department, where I would call a pop-out of technology services. We have five and a half FTEs, myself, my administrative assistant, Becca, who you've probably all met before, three data liaisons, which we have an opening right now of which, and then a part-time assessment clerk that we moved a year and a half ago from Student Services. You'll see that show up in the budget in a little bit as an increase as we move that over. But smaller group, but we are very prideful of, of the work that we're able to turn out that you see and that's done behind the scenes.
The last part of this is, is really all-encompassing, and it goes far beyond just technology services and, and the data team. It's the, the BOSI Support Services. And this includes things that, such as for HR, WinCap and professional development services through the teacher center. Infinite Campus, IP Direct, SNAP, Family ID, the alert systems, website hosting, as well as Office 365 and email services. A lot of the, the things that they do are behind the scenes, and they go, like I said, beyond just the, the technology services. And when we look at the accomplishments, accomplishments that we have, there's a lot of pride in this slide. Year after year, we show this, and, and I think about the customer service that we provide. This year, we've closed around sixty-two hundred student and staff helped us tickets. That's from July to just about now. There's a lot of activity going on on our network, over a hundred and eighteen million events on the network weekly, and we have a pretty high uptime of maintaining network stability, around ninety-eight percent. We've also continued with the installation of interactive flat panels, not only at the elementary over the last few years, but now we've increased that to the middle school levels, and we've satisfied all the classrooms and supports, support areas with new interactive flat panels. And we're looking at some point in the future to do that to the high school. As Melanie had mentioned earlier with the one-to-one, we've worked collaboratively with multiple stakeholders throughout the district to develop and refine systems that really support our one-to-one device initiative in six and nine, six through nine. And then we've, we've implemented new instructional programs that are going to support digital learning as we, we go into more of a one-to-one environment. This summer, we've done a lot with putting back classrooms, going, going away from that temporary learning model from last year, reallocating smart boards and light speeds and, and different things from non-traditional classroom spaces and putting them back into where they should be. We've provided professional development on things like discovery education, NearPod, Office 365, and, and multiple others.
Some of the accomplishments for the data team is making it through the day and the week sometimes, but some bigger picture things would be all the survey work we've done that I've alluded to already. The third bullet on the right, or the left column here, my left, is really speaking about NIST standards and cybersecurity. If I were to highlight anything on this slide, Matt and I along with a company called Sadara, who's our virtual CISO, that's the VC, so they're chief information security officers, we spend a half a day every week, door closed, phones off unless there's an emergency, really focusing on learning best practices and then more importantly implementing them for the district. We're going to do enough in the next eighteen months. So, we're in school every Wednesday afternoon. If you don't see us, we're in my office with two of the best experts locally. And if there's anything I would be most prideful or happy or satisfied with is the work that we're doing, and hope to share some of that more with the advisory oversight committee come this June. The other column, I, I spoke a little bit about the virtual CISO, the chief information security officer, but you've seen the board presentations, the third bullet, there's around data dashboards. We work with all of our principals and department leaders, really focusing right now on our secondary leadership team to make sure that we have live daily data in regards to attendance, behavior, equity, and academic achievement. And we continue to work with Melanie's office to refine that work. And that last bullet, it's not meant to be an all-encompassing list, but anything that the, the central office or the buildings need relative to reports, we have been very happy to be able to accommodate most, if not all, requests in a, in a timely manner. That's some of the things that we just did this past year.
So, with any great success comes some obstacles and challenges along the way. And with that, as we increase our technology use over the last few years, it's really trying to balance that innovation that's, that's out there with the safety and the security. As Jeff had talked about earlier, wanting to make sure people understand the risks that are associated as we, we take, we take that next step into a one-to-one to an environment. It's also addressing daily requests while continuing to find a time to refine our systems. So, how do I, how do I ensure my, my guys are in, and my people on my team are able to move forward with the, the programs and the systems that they have and understand how to learn about best practices and, and continue to relate that to the people that we're working with? And the, there's that expectation of twenty-four-seven uptime and, and just making sure that our systems and our resources are always there and always online. And then COVID, especially with hardware replacements, there's the supply chain issues that we've been dealing with, and the, the rising cost of pretty much everything these days, the, the hardware replacement becomes just a, a constant struggle that we have.
Some obstacles or challenges we have with the data team, I think back to the nineties when I started with some of you, and we had four email systems, and you could load anything you wanted on your desktop. We've come a long way in twenty-three years. It's that careful balance of fostering creativity and teacher innovation, but yet following the laws, two-D laws or privacy laws on the books with New York State, they're not recommendations, they're laws. So, finding that balance, I think we've done a really good job, is a, is a daily challenge, but we overcome that. And I would also eliminate the last bullet, turnover is happening to the data team in the last year or so, folks coming and going. So, we tend to work short, and hopefully we'll bring some stability to our department that's coming here.
So, as we look to the, the near future, we look at some anticipated scheduled technology replacements. Some of the big projects that are on here are, are around device renewal, and that's not only our laptops, but that's also desktops, Macs, tablets, and various other iPads. And then also, it's our storage, and that's replacing the on-premise storage, just anything that we're not putting into the cloud into Office 365. Those are, that, that's coming end of life in, in another six to twelve months, and anticipated shipping delays are, are causing us to think about replacing that sooner than later. So, if we look at our, our technology services budget from a historical perspective over the last several years, you're going to see that it's, it's broken down into a number of different areas. The majority, just like other departments, the, the majority of that budget is made up of salary, that's around sixty percent. And then it goes into BOSI's instructional services, BOSI's equipment, categorical aid for hardware and software, and other equipment. And we'll take a look later in future slides of more of a deeper dive into those, those various categories.
The budget for my department is relatively small. Ninety-four percent of it is salary-based. The increase here you see is contractually based primarily with salaries. And a little bump up that we moved some money from Student Services to cover that halftime assessment clerk and the supply she needs to administer some of the assessments that we do throughout the year. So, we increased, you'll find the, the granular details in your budget packet of, of some of our general fund, five-hundred code monies to buy those supplies. Those are the two areas that we bumped up a little bit from last year.
And then the final part of this is the BOSI support, which he, here you see again from a historical perspective that it's, it's been relatively flat in the last few years with contractual costs going up based on devices as well as just overall contractual obligations raising year after year. So, if you look at our overall budget, it's supported through a couple of different areas. The first is through categorical state aid for both hardware and software, and that is based on the per pupil allocation at each one of the schools. And then we look at the purchasing through BOSI's, in which we generate aid based on what the purchase is for the following fiscal year. And finally, we look at the technology reserve, which is essentially our savings account that we can pull out of with voter approval for strategic purchases that may not be there for the, the general fund. And then some complementary revenues, the Smart Schools Bond Act that we have, we continue to use at, at various times, as well as federal E-rate that we've leveraged in the past. And both of these are outside of our general education fund. So, when we look at our proposed budget, here we see their salaries, our contracts, equipment, and supplies, or the various objects that we talked about earlier. Technology services, you can see the increase at, in the salary line because that went from last year seven point five to this year a point five increase. So, now we're eight, eight full-time FTEs. And then also with that is our, our yearly contractual salary increase that's, that's there.
This was the table that I was alluding to that shows you some of the granular details. It does show approximately a five percent change, but again, those are primarily in, in sunk costs and, and supplies.
And then the, the final piece of this is just our, our BOSI support, where again, it, it, there's a three percent increase in that, just like I said earlier. It does represent additional costs in contractual services and, and devices. Any questions?
The benefit that Matt and I have had is folks that we hired back in the nineties and two thousands have stayed with us. It's, it's, the answer quickly to your, to your question is retirement. So, it, it's not competition per se. I know we're working closely with Sean's office. It'll be interesting to see who we find because of that competition to replace some of these folks. So, it, it's a little bit of both sides, and we'll see if the challenge is really there. We like to still think that people want to work for, for Matt and me and work for Pittsford Schools more specifically. So, we have our fingers crossed that we'll get a, a good pool of candidates to fill these holes.
If I could just comment, one of the things that sometimes people do not equate your positions to is the impact on our health and safety of a district. And the work that you've done specific to health and safety relative to COVID with creating health inventories for visitors and staff on a daily basis to making sure students are able to stay connected from home to school to cybersecurity and to being a critical part of our building infrastructure plans, from everything from our emergency response buttons to being integral in our active shooter responses is, is a part that I don't think people can truly, can truly grasp. So, you have a, a, an amazing role with students and instruction. Every business will say you have to make database decisions, but your decisions are only as good as the data you're receiving, and the data that we receive is of the highest quality. So, thank you both for, for all you do.
You're welcome.
So, that will conclude our budget workshop at six fifty-four. We'll resume in six minutes.
Good evening, and welcome to the Pittsford Board of Education meeting. If you'd please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for Its Stance, One Nation, Under God, Indivisible, with Liberty and Justice for All.
Before we begin tonight's meeting, the Board of Education would like to begin by standing in solidarity with the citizens of the Ukraine and those in our community who have been directly impacted by this week's attacks. We'd like to reiterate superintend- We'd like to reiterate Superintendent Piro's message encouraging any students and families needing any additional support. Please contact your building administrators during this time. May I have a motion to approve the agenda, please? Thanks, Robin. And Pete, any edits? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. May I have the approval of the minutes from February eighth, please? Thanks Ted and Sarah. Any edits there? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Board of Education reports, you can see all of the dates that we have before us. Each of these meetings will be in real time at the Doubletree. So if there are any changes, I'll keep you informed there. Dates to remember, we have the third of March coming up this Thursday. We have a board tour only of Southernland High School at seven thirty. If I could just have a show of hands, who will be there? I think we'll have the whole gang there. Excellent. And the fifteenth of March will be our next board meeting. So this evening, we have to take a vote on a Pittsford Central School District nominee for the BOSI's board. We have someone who has been sitting in that seat who is running for reelection. That person happens to be the person that's named after this room. So I think we all know Kim McCloskey very well. She is highly qualified for the position. We've all seen her resume multiple times. And I think she is probably overqualified for the role. And I think Dan White would not like me for saying that. But I would like to take a motion for nominating, I would like to nominate Kim McCloskey for the Board of Education for BOSI's one. If I can have a second, please. Thanks Ted. Any questions about Kim's background? Okay, I think we need to, all in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. I will let Kim know the good news. Financial report, Darren.
Thank you. Have the Treasury report for January. We did receive almost five million dollars in the star amount. So as of January, we've received all of our property taxes for the current year. School Lunch Fund had almost a thirty thousand dollar surplus. So we're all just about within fifty thousand dollars of being flushed for the year as opposed to about four hundred thousand dollars negative for the same point in time the year before. The program is really struggling, you heard it tonight, with staffing due to absences and people retiring, et cetera. We're really understaffed there. So it's making it difficult to provide some of the options that we normally provide. You heard tonight about, excuse me, federal stimulus money and the grants, et cetera. You've noticed in the special aid fund, it took all the way until January to get approval for the ARP funds and some of the title funds there. That concludes the highlights.
Thanks Darren. May I have a motion, please? Thanks Jeff. Pete, questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks Darren. Human Resource Report, Sean.
Good evening. For your consideration, we have the Professional Staff Report. We have one certificated staff appointment, one school-related professional appointment, one appointment for managerial confidential, one appointment for supervisory technical. We have one supervisory technical resignation for retirement, two school-related professional resignations, a claims auditor resignation, and we also have spring coaching lists, salaries, and volunteers for your approval as well.
May I have a motion, please? Sarah and Robin. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Next for your consideration is the Support Staff Report. We have one payroll clerk appointment, one clerk resignation for retirement, three transportation appointments, one custodial appointment, one custodial termination, one food service worker resignation, and one food service worker termination.
May I have a motion, please? Ted and Renee, any questions there? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. And then finally, we have a first reading for tenure for a teacher.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Student Services, Shayna.
I just have the second reading of the Code of Conduct for this evening. Thank you.
Okay, may I have a motion, please, to accept? Pete and Renee, questions from the board? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Again, thank you for your work on that and the team that was involved. Special Education Report, Elizabeth.
Good evening. We have CSC and CPSC recommendations on the consent agenda. Thank you.
Superintendent's Report, Mike.
There is not a need for an executive session this evening. I do want to give a special thank you to Menon Center, PTSA, for the purchase of art supplies at Menon Center Elementary School for fifteen hundred dollars. So thank you, Menon Center, PTSA. A couple of updates about tomorrow. So tomorrow, the governor has, and New York State Department of Health have issued a mask optional policy, which means that masks will be optional for students, staff, and visitors in our building. I did send an email out to staff and to the community this evening, absent of guidance from the state. So we were anticipating the worst case scenario, which would mean that there would be a policy without guidance. So we've been meeting regularly to try to fill in the blanks to the extent we can. I think what's critical here, just to understand, is that for the last two years, what we have been doing is looking at the CDC, the state ad depart, or the New York State Department of Health and Monroe County Department of Health for guidance. We've been following their mandates. We've been advocating for metrics. The metrics came out. The metrics have led to a mask optional policy. And so I do want to acknowledge the fact that some people are elated and some people are going to be anxious going into tomorrow. And as a community, we need to acknowledge that type of dichotomous relationship between the folks that are gonna be in school tomorrow. And ask for us to be good neighbors. Something I've been asking for a long time is to be good neighbors and respect each other's thoughts around why or whether or not we're wearing a mask or not wearing a mask. The, just to speak a little bit to some of the metrics leading up to this decision, has come down to the vaccination rates, hospitalization rates, positivity rates, pediatric hospitalization rates. What the governor announced in her decision was that New York State has the highest rate of adults fully vaccinated, highest rate of teens fully vaccinated, second highest rate of children ages five eleven fully vaccinated. There's been a ninety-eight percent decline in COVID-19 cases. Continuous downward trend in cases for fifty-one consecutive days, probably fifty-three consecutive days now. The number of children testing positive for COVID-19 is declining to levels that we haven't seen since before we returned from summer break. Pediatric hospitalizations have declined by roughly eighty percent since the Omicron peak. And when you juxtapose that data to our current data in Pittsburgh, we have two cases at the middle school of students that are positive right now. And we have two elementary students. So we have four total students out of about fifty-seven hundred, which is certainly positive. We, our zip code, one four five three four, has the highest vaccination rate in the county. And our PCSD students have the highest vaccination rates in the county as well. And I shared those two pieces of data with you, along with the state data, to reaffirm that this is a safe environment for our students to come back to with a mask optional. As far as making the decision, we did reach out to the community and looked for feedback, albeit not a scientific survey. It was a perceptual survey to see what people felt. In the event we had a mask optional decision to make, as I've shared before, we had eighty-nine percent of our families and ninety-two percent of our staff that said that they would already support or would consider supporting a mask optional policy if certain criteria were in place. And the following criteria are in place, which include a lower infection rate since January, a lower hospitalization rate, access to testing, access to district-based testing, lower PCSD infection rates, access to masks. And then the last thing we couldn't accommodate was starting after April break. So, but we, part of that was having windows open. So we can certainly work within those boundaries. We have recognized the importance of staying true to the guidance provided by all of the major areas, which has been part of the decision-making process to go ahead and affirm that tomorrow we will be mask optional. Today, we received from Dr. Mendoza's office and Executive Bellows' office some facts that were also in my email for those that are worried about coming back to school because of being immunocompromised or having family members that are immunocompromised relative to the importance or the significance of the KN-95 masks. Within themselves, what we received was that they are eighty-three percent effective. So for the families that are concerned about coming back tomorrow, know that if there was nothing else in place and excluding vaccination rates, that the masks alone that we'll have available would provide a substantial amount of protection. And then if that's the starting point with the KN-95s, if you, again, are concerned about COVID-19, we have multiple layers that we still will have on top of that. So tomorrow means mask optional. It doesn't mean that everything else is thrown out the window. It's quite the contrary. Our other protocols will stay in effect. And just like how we started and have changed throughout the last two and a half years, we're gonna start with what the mandate says, which is mask optional. We're gonna start tight after that, and we'll see what areas we can loosen up with. But as far as what tomorrow's going to look like in the near future, we will continue all of the same protocols, the same lunch protocols, snack protocols. Meaning at the elementary level, for example, we have things in place where students are having snack every other row. And then they will put their masks on. So the difference here is they have snacks every other row. Some kids will put their masks on, some will not. We'll continue with our district-based clinics. We'll continue with all of our disinfecting, our health screenings. We will have take-home COVID tests available at any time. We will encourage classrooms to have windows open when it makes sense. We'll continue with health hygiene practices. We'll encourage people to stay home when sick. We're gonna continue with weekly random testing. And we will be notifying elementary classroom families if there are two or more COVID-positive students in the classroom. I also, in my email, I sent out a Q and A. And these are questions and answers to most of the emails that I've received from parents, staff, administrators over the last week. So I'm not gonna go over all of these, but I will highlight a few of them. One is that mask shaming, vaccine shaming, all of that shaming cannot happen. I just make a plea to everyone to keep our behaviors in check. This isn't about winning, losing, right or wrong. This is about people dealing with the crisis in their own ways. And us as neighbors dealing with it with a loving heart and being able to support one another. So a lot of our messaging in the morning to kids will be around that. During the day in classes, some of our morning circles will be around respecting people's rights to wear a mask and not wear a mask. And I think that's a really big start in teaching our kids within our schools that sense of humanity and valuing different opinions. So mask shaming is not going to be anything that we want to or will have part of our school district. Other questions, why don't I start with questions that we don't know yet the answer to? So it's a little frustrating again that we have guidance, or we don't have guidance when a mandate has changed. So some of the things that we don't have answers to, what will new quarantine and contact tracing protocols be with, look like with an unmasked population? So we don't know that, which is okay, not to know it right now because we have a few days to figure it out from the time someone is COVID-positive. Quarantining, we don't know the answer to that, what that's going to look like. And we don't know what the return to school's going to look like after you're COVID-positive. So right now, you're out five days. And then what will day six through, through ten look like? We just don't have guidance on that. I think all the other questions, you can certainly see, I won't go over each one individually here tonight. But I will say that it's a big deal. We're going from two and a half years of masking to making it mask optional. Having something on your face or doing something for two and a half years and then stopping to do it is a significant change for a lot of people. So again, some of it's gonna be easy and some of it's gonna be really tough. So I just ask for everyone just to be respectful. And I know that we have a roomful of opinions here. We have six thousand students with opinions and then their families with opinions. And I think I've heard almost every opinion. And I think the board has heard almost every opinion. We've been trying to be respectful to every single one of them. We certainly know that whatever decision we make, there's going to be people to disagree. But we will continue to be adapting to the changing environment. We'll continue to reach out to the public health officials to make these decisions. We'll continue to challenge things that we don't think is right, and we will continue to get answers to our community as soon as we get them. So with that, I open up for any questions.
So Mike, I just want to make a comment that the guidelines just came out as we're sitting at the table.
Okay, would you like to read them?
No.
So it looks like I have some work for tomorrow. So you'll be receiving follow-up to my email tonight with regards to whatever those guidelines say.
Okay. Tells you how quickly things change. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please? Thanks Renee and Sarah. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Old business? New business? Okay. With that, we will go into public comment. I will say we have rules of engagement for public comment. First of all, you need to be a citizen of Pittsburgh, a resident of, not citizen of Pittsburgh, a resident of Pittsburgh. In Pittsburgh? We don't, are you, it depends on what you're seeking. We can't speak on behalf of a private school.
No, no, no. I have a child that attends St. Louis School, which is in our district.
Uh huh.
So we are impacted by your calendar and all of those things.
Okay, well, right now, Anne Marie, it is about if you're a Pittsburgh resident, and it's pretty clear on our protocol.
But that would mean that urban suburban students, parents would not be allowed to speak that way.
Not necessarily, not necessarily, because urban suburban students are our students. They do attend our schools.
But St. Louis students are typically.
Yeah, let's go through.
Well, first of all, okay, we have eleven write-in submissions, and then we have all of these that were just submitted to me. So, I'm going to read every one of them this evening because I don't want to have any bias with anything that's been submitted either online or in person. So, I am going to go through each one of these, and I'll probably go back and forth between the two. Thanks, Anne Marie. We're going to begin with a write-in submission. And again, I ask for civility with the audience members that are here in attendance. And the moment that goes away, we are going to shut down public comment. Jennifer O'Sullivan is forty-one Burr Oak Drive. Hi, I'd like to know what the transition plan is for shifting masking to be optional. Particularly, what is the plan for families that selected an alternative learning plan as a needed accommodation before they were okay with masking become, becoming optional?
So, that was one of our Q and As that I did not read. There is a process for families who do have medically compromised or immunocompromised child where this environment may not be safe for him or her or they. So, they will work with their building principal. We do have a process to see if they were qualified for remote learning via BOSIs.
Thadahar Babakumar.
Do you need my address?
Yes, please.
Okay. I did write it on the card.
Oh, that's fine. I have it on your card.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay. So, my name is Thadahar Babakumar. My pronouns are she/her/hers. As a school-based mental health therapist who has worked in the schools full-time for the past three-plus years, I would like to talk about trauma and increased mental health needs and how that relates to the pandemic and not the masks. Two years ago, when the pandemic started and everything shut down, our world turned upside down. We asked teachers and students to do something that they have never done before, teach and learn remotely. Crisis learning was a traumatic point for everybody. During this time, stress levels increased, and many were shocked and feared of the unknown. Many struggled with food or services such as laptops and Wi-Fi and even childcare. School was the least of many's concern during this time. Last year, we moved to hybrid and remote learning models. The kids were socially distanced and in school for two days. Some kids were still completely remote. Hybrid, hybrid kids were only able to see half of their friends because of the way they were split, and many remained remote. They became more secluded behind their screens, more isolated and depressed. We saw an increase in social isolation, depression, and suicidal thoughts during this time. Humans are social creatures, so when asked to do something we're not used to, it causes anxiety and depression. During this time, teachers had been working on how to ensure everyone was getting the information. They had multiple lesson plans and also had to deal with how their own children were going to school or not going to school. This year, we've been able to return to school full-time, start back with all the activities, including music programs and sports. Kids are able to see all of their friends. However, the students are back to school with a new set of obstacles. They have to learn how to deal with people again. In 2020, when the world shut down, it created a traumatic point. When trauma occurs, people get stuck at a point of time. During this time, people only know how to survive. They struggle to do new things, including learning. When kids started coming back to school, we saw an increase in what people called a mental health need. However, when taking the trauma-informed process, we see the bigger picture. People do not process trauma while they're in it. While the trauma is happening, people only know how to survive. Once the trauma seems to be ending or passing, people are able to start processing it. Right now, we are, we have an increase in mental health needs and not enough staff to take care of everyone. Being able to return to school full-time with masks and vaccines allows for people to start the process of trauma, of processing their trauma. Now, we are moving rapidly into the next phase of removing masks. We haven't even made sure the students who need help are receiving it. We now are going to continue to stress out an already stressed and maxed-out mental health system. Lastly, we are currently, currently in the midst of a staff and bus driver shortage. If by removing masks too soon, then we end up having more of a shortage and having to close down, we're taking a huge risk of re-traumatizing our kids and adults. As a therapist and a person, it is so much harder and takes so much longer to process the same trauma the second time around. People lose hope and trust that things will ever get better when they're re-traumatized. We haven't completely processed the trauma of the pandemic, as is seen in the numbers of our youth risk survey. And families are waiting, are waiting for weeks to talk to a counselor or therapist. And now, we're jumping into something that has the potential to cause more trauma. I really hope the plan is put into place for this surge as we will see people to continue to process the trauma of the pandemic.
Thanks, Thadahar. I'm going to read a write-in submission by Sadie Schramm from Thirty Jordan Road. I'm writing today about the change in masking policy in schools. Honestly, I'm not really sure what to say. It just feels like parents are being unheard and dismissed and questions left unanswered. The district survey indicated that parents could support a mask optional policy if there was a clear plan that included other mitigation measures. The if is being completely ignored. I've had a sixteen-year career in the nonprofit, profit sector, and with that, I've been involved in a lot of change management, more than I'd like. What's happening here is just really bad change management. We all knew that a mask optional policy would be coming at some point, but for weeks, parents have been seeking answers as to what that would look like, and those questions are being ignored. We thought there might be a plan. Handing out masks and tests is a good thing to do, but it's not a plan. What other mitigation measures are going to be put in place? Will there be a change in distancing requirements? Will we invest in air quality? What about the folks who indicated that they'd need an alternative learning model? This change does not feel well-thought-out, and I do not understand the rush. Surely, we could hold on a bit longer until you had answers to some of the questions, until we could open windows in classrooms and until younger siblings had the chance to be vaccinated. To send an email saying that we're going to mask optional in three days with an aside about how we still don't know exactly how it will all work is irresponsible. There's a way to thoughtfully consider the impact here and get to a mask optional policy that does not dismiss the very real and valid concerns of many parents. Scott Georgia.
Scott Georgia, Seventy Woodland Road, and I would like to talk about the future of Pittsburgh schools' education. In March twenty twenty, the learning and education of my son and daughter was just dropped. My son left in July before a diploma was issued, and he's now preparing to go to Romania with an infantry unit. My daughter never recovered from remote learning and hybrid learning and mandates and masking. You need to never let this happen again. Teachers must educate our children about COVID with science and research. Years ago, many believed in the Loch Ness Monster, and they were afraid of something called Bigfoot. Years from now, people will look back on us and say, I cannot believe they thought COVID was a greater risk to children than the flu. Because of this Bigfoot thing, you can't get bus drivers, so I drive my daughter to school every day. You cannot find substitute teachers. My English, my daughter's English teacher has been gone since the first week, and it's been a revolving door of fill-ins. She spends part of English class as a study hall, but who am I kidding? It's TikTok. Children need to be educated about truth, not fear. With me tonight are other parents, and we've formed a very organized group. We've bonded our relationships because of a common goal to improve the education of our children. We want our schools highly ranked like they used to be. So, we'll be here this year, and we'll be here next year. Some of us will be here in five to ten years. As I study the board, I see that many of you may not be here in five to ten years. And, and that includes you, Mr. Superintendent, as you approach retirement age. But I see that you, Sarah, have a chance of being here that long. Please do not forget about us. Please do not forget about the damage that Bigfoot did to our children and to your children. Thank you.
I'm going to read a write-in submission by Michelle Ricks. Michelle is eight Turtle Creek in Pittsburgh. As I've stated at prior meetings and in prior emails, I have many concerns about the current plan for having masks optional in our schools. American Academy of Pediatrics is still recommending masking in schools. Vaccination rate of five-to-eleven-year-olds is low, and there are new studies suggesting the effectiveness of the vaccine in this age group is significantly reduced over time, even in terms of preventing serious illness. We're just returning from break where many families traveled. It seems prudent to wait a week or two and see if the community infection rates spikes. Just recently, the indoor mask mandate was lifted. There's not been enough time to see if there will be an impact on county infection rate. There's been no communication about other mitigation measures, air quality measurement improvement, windows open and fans, et cetera. There's been no communication about how higher-risk activities like band and chorus will be handled. I think that's been addressed this evening as well. There's been no communication about how exposure notifications will be handled. Without masks, even one infected person in a classroom will constitute an exposure of everyone in that room. Will parents be notified if there's one positive case in any class or lunchroom or PE class? How will notification be handled for middle school and high school students? Will they need to sign into every class, study hall, teacher, our library time? Is there anything you feel wasn't answered? That can be answered?
I believe some of that is going to be in the guidance as far as notifying secondary parents.
Colleen Emmons. Sure.
I appreciate everyone's time and attention tonight, as well as our school board members that I had the opportunity to speak to over the past couple of days.
Jeremy, if you could address the board, you're not addressing the audience. If you could address.
Oh.
Or Jerry, I'm sorry.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. So, Jerry Emmons at Thirty Thomas Grove in Pittsburgh. Okay. And I appreciate the opportunity to address you all. I did have the opportunity to speak to several of you over the past couple of days, and certainly appreciated that opportunity. I'm the chief of emergency medicine. I'm an emergency medicine physician at a regional hospital. I have had the privilege to care for our communities during this life-changing pandemic, to hold the hands of those who have lost their family members, old and young. A couple of weeks ago, I sent a four-year-old to the ICU. Their risk factor was not cancer, not chemotherapy, it was asthma, okay? This pandemic is not done. We are still admitting patients. Patients are still going to ICU. Our last peak was only a few weeks ago. The newest variant, Omicron BA2, which is in Europe now, and is expected to become the dominant variant, is thirty percent more contagious than the Omicron we have now, which is four, four times as contagious as Delta was before that. My point is, we have a highly contagious virus that is transmitted by respiratory particles. There is a concept called source control, which is part of primary prevention. Primary prevention is stopping the transmission and, and vaccination. We have hung our hat on vaccination, but it seems to be very effective for adults. Unfortunately, the state just released data yesterday that our vaccines for five-to-eleven-year-olds only prevent infections against Omicron in twelve percent of the cases. Twelve percent of kids get protection from the vaccine. And by the way, our vaccination rates, I don't have an exact answer, is somewhere between twenty and forty percent in that age group. We have to consider that. Also, their risk of hospitalization dropped from about a hundred percent down to, down to, down to fifty percent protection. So, the vaccines unfortunately are not as effective as we had hoped. I recognize that I'm running out of time here. I want you all to know. Two million kids got COVID in January, okay? Nine hundred children have died during this, during this pandemic. Seven thousand children have long-term inflammatory syndrome related to it, long-haul COVID. The children are not immune. The adults in the building are vulnerable. Mask optional does not provide the first-line protection. And, Mr. Pearl, I have to say, I'm very concerned that children who are compromised are, are being considered to be, it's too risky to have them in normal classrooms, and they're allowed to go to BOSIs or have remote learning. I don't believe we're meeting the education requirement set by law for our district by having these compromised, marginalized children sent off-site because of our desire to go mask-free for everybody else.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm going to read another write-in submission, Bonnie McGee. I'm sorry I can't be there in person, but I want to make sure that my voice is heard, and there are at least twenty families who wrote you a joint letter who feel the same way. We're incredibly disappointed in the rollout of the mask optional policy. As of Tuesday morning, we have basically been told by the school district that masks are optional starting Wednesday, and that details are still being worked out. Even if we get an email this afternoon, this is too little time for families to digest the material and prepare our children for tomorrow. This is a critical decision that the superintendent is making, and as such, it requires time to get the new rules correct and time to share with the community. It's appalling that there were more hearings about the full-day K than there have been about COVID policy. We want to know what school is going to look like as of tomorrow. The superintendent mentioned social distance with mask optional. Will they reinstate social distancing, especially in small classrooms or areas like band and chorus where presumably you now allow children to sing and play instruments without masks or bell covers? What does the policy look like if there's an exposure in a classroom? Is there a threshold of infection that will trigger a reassessment of the policy? These are just a handful of the many important questions that need to have been decided, and the parents need to know the answers to well before tomorrow. Meredith Graham.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. Meredith Graham, Twenty-One North Field Gate. I just want to first say thanks to the board and administration, as well as all the teachers out there who have been working tirelessly, tirelessly through this. And I know this is not going to be easy for them tomorrow. I have a lot of empathy for them. I hope we can all be kind, especially to the teachers. I'd like to just state that it's surprising that we haven't heard very cool recommendations about staying home when you're sick and using the tests before coming back. Tomorrow, people will not have masks on. It's been great to have those tests come home. I think the people who have requested the tests are, are probably going to use them. But I don't know if the people who aren't going to be masking tomorrow are also less likely to use the tests. I'd like to understand more about what the plan is if someone is symptom, has symptoms in the classroom. I was really happy to hear my child had a circle this morning with their, their, their teacher, and they talked about masking and how we're going to respect everybody's choices, and I think that's great. Nothing was said about what happens if, you know, this child next to me is coughing and I'm uncomfortable. Are, are they going to still, you know, be expected to go to the nurse and have a, a test to make sure that it's just a cold? We're going to see more colds. We're going to see more illness now. We're going to see teachers getting colds and illnesses. All of that is about to happen. So, I'd, I'd also like to understand for the teachers, are they going to be, you know, okay at the front of the room with a cold? You know, will kids with symptoms be asked to mask? There's so many questions yet in my mind about this. I know I'm not the only one worried, but I do also just want to draw attention to the idea of having anxiety around this, right? So I don't think I'm anxious about the masks. I'm wearing a mask because we aren't yet in green zone. If we were in the green zone, I would feel great about taking off my mask because I would know that we're in a situation where it's very unlikely that I would get COVID, and I'm not worried about that anymore. But we're not there yet. So I'm not, I didn't have anxiety about it, but rather, I'm just using logic and I'm using the guidelines that have been out there. And I'm hoping that everyone else also thinks about that. I know there will be people who aren't looking at that, and that's fine, and that's their choice, but I'm guessing tomorrow might not be everyone throwing off their masks as some think they will. Thank you.
Thank you, Meredith. David Mensch? David Mensch?
Hello, everybody. Dave Mensch, 35 Deer Creek. On a note, I put on the card, one of the numbers that has never been disclosed is, we have, what, 5,700 kids in the district? How many, what number of those children have gotten COVID and recovered? I know my son had had it back in 2020, recovered in two days. How many kids have had it and recovered? I know the numbers are there because they've been reported. I'm kind of wondering, is it 70%, 50%, 60%? Because those children are your barrier to other people catching it. They are the natural barrier to stop it, as we all know. So that would be a good number for people to actually know. Also referencing what the doctor had reported is that in the country, 900 children have died of COVID. There's 320 million people in America. What number of those 900 is also a good thing to know? What number of those 900 had comorbidities? How many had five comorbidities? Six? I know the average, I think 80% of all people that died had an average of five comorbidities, I believe? So what is it in the children as well? We're looking more at the kids and in the school. And then we talk about vaccination, where how many countries in Europe have stopped using an mRNA vaccine for children? Multiple countries have stopped the Moderna vaccine for the kids or the people under the age of 30. Why is that? Because of all of the adverse events, the myocarditis, the heart injury that happens. You think it's rare, but it happens. And then the last piece is one thing that I looked up. I remember last time I was here, I was talking about the going to do an asbestos abatement job with the little blue masks because they're so incredibly effective for stopping small particles. I also learned that the average human being exhales 14 ounces of water per day. We have over 350 kids, I think, just in the school alone, all exhaling 14 ounces of water per day. So unless you're going home and wringing out your mask and filling up a glass with about eight ounces of fluid, that vapor is going into the air. It's spreading out through here, we can count up the number of people just in this room. And when you logically think about it, that's where the virus might be going. It might be going along with the water vapor, that's the argument, that it's on the water particles. Those water particles aren't going home with you in your mask. You're leaving it right here in the air. So give that a thought as far as using logic and science, follow the science.
Thank you, Dave. Colleen Emmons?
I will start with gratitude. Thank you for listening, Amy. You spent an hour with me yesterday. Thank you to the board. Thank you, Mr. Perro. I know that I don't envy your spot at all in any way, shape, or form, so I want to thank you first.
Colleen, if I could just ask you to come a little bit closer.
Yeah, sorry, you can't hear me? Look, I'm like so far.
Can't hear you. If you want to, there you go.
Hey, challenge, right? I cannot speak to the scientific part of this, it's not my, it's not my spot, but I can speak to the human part of this. So I want to share a couple stories with you. Hopefully you think of them tonight. I am not here to, you know, haunt you, or I am not here to be an adversary, I just need to represent my children because that is my one and only job in this life, is to protect them. Back in 2020, when COVID started to become a thing, their dad is an ED physician, and we are very deliberate in how we speak to our children, and we have two very anxious children. So we immediately started talking to them back in 2020 about COVID so that they weren't scared, so that they knew that their dad was safe, and that they knew that things, they didn't have to be scared of him when he was coming home, that things might change and that we would be okay. My son, the following week, had a student out, a classmate out, and he said the word COVID. He was threatened with the most severe punishment possible, and I had a meeting with Mr. DeBelle. The following week, the district closed. The reason I'm sharing this story is because throughout these past two years, we've been very deliberate in how we have presented the challenges to our children. Mask wearing is not fun for anybody. I don't want it to stick around, nobody wants it to stick around, and not a single person here is exempt from COVID. Nobody has, whether it's a loss of friends, time, family members, I lost a grandmother, nobody is exempt. And we have been very deliberate in empowering them and in saying to them, masks protect you, and they keep you safe, they keep daddy safe, and they take care of others. We have empowered them to take care of others. So here comes all these mask mandates, and it's fascinating because I am a twin mom, I buried a child, one of our twins has passed away. I hear people talk about statistics with only 900 children dying, and I have a unique perspective because as a twin mom that has lost a child, I have had people say, oh, at least you have your child, your surviving child. And I look at them and I think, gosh, which child would you pick to die? And I feel the same way about the 900 children that have lost their lives. At what point is there a fair statistic? And I have watched my child survive sepsis, skin grafting, heart surgery, bilateral brain bleeds, hours and hours of therapy. He is put in time, he fights every single day. He's thriving at Thornhill Road, thanks to Mr. DeBelle, thanks to his fantastic teachers, and I cannot thank them enough. But here comes this mask mandate being removed, and I want so badly to look at them and confidently say to them, as I have done in the last two years, you are okay. And I cannot do that. And I really think that with open communication and having time to be heard and ask questions and be thorough, parents like me can look at their children, who we have so deliberately empowered to take care of others, and care that we will be okay with this mask mandate being removed. I am here because never in my life have I felt like I can less protect my children. I have lost countless hours of sleep because I have to trust you to make a decision for my child when I have seen those children fight, and I need your help to be thorough, and I need your help to hear these parents' concerns. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Colleen. A write-in submission by Jeremy Schur. "The district had the choice to continue mandatory masking or switch to an optional policy. In choosing the latter, the district accepted an increased risk of COVID transmission in Pittsford schools. To manage this risk responsibly, I expect the district to determine and publish objective transmission criteria that if met would trigger an automatic return to mandatory masking. The health and safety of children is not a political or opinion-based issue. It is an uncertain time, parents have the right to rely on clear guidance and commitments from the district. While everyone hopes that COVID is soon a thing of the past, please prepare for a scenario where COVID remains a health risk in schools." And that's for Shipmunk Trail. Another write-in submission by Dorothy Bausch Barker at 17 North Field Gate. "With the mask optional policy starting tomorrow, the district will need to work with the Health Department to determine and publish objective transmission criteria that if met would trigger an automatic return to mandatory masking. This is important for the safety of our children and acknowledges the very real possibility of increased disease prevalence or additional variants. We can hope for the best and plan for additional scenarios." Laura Pullum?
Hi.
Thank you.
I wrote this down because anyone who knows me, and there are a few of you, know that I will talk endlessly.
Laura, if you could just give us your address.
Sure. Laura Pullum, 398 Menden Road. "My daughter is a third-grade student at Thornhill. I spent the first two years of the pandemic teaching, first remotely and then in-person at a small day school, and I am now employed as a registered nurse for the county and a substitute teacher and nurse for the district. I have straddled the two professions most affected by this pandemic over the last three years. I have seen it on the front lines as a teacher, as a parent, and as a medical professional. I support the plan to unmask, but not right now. We are unmasking at the earliest possible date without a plan or protocols in place to reduce the risk of a spike in cases. The email that parents receive today stated that you are still waiting on guidance and guidelines, and yet we are moving forward. Many students have only recently been vaccinated and are not yet eligible for boosters, and their younger siblings are not able to be vaccinated at all. Recovery rates and previous infections are not indicative of immunity. There is no immunity for COVID. I have heard a teacher today at the high school stating that she had had COVID twice, she had been vaccinated three times, she felt she was immune, she was planning to go maskless tomorrow. She still is, and that's okay. I told her if I were still teaching, I would go maskless for lectures, but not face-to-face with students. She did not realize that she could still contract asymptomatic and pass COVID to immunocompromised students and families. When people are vaccinated, they have antibodies, they are less likely to be hospitalized, they are still capable of being infectious. They can spread COVID to those who are most susceptible. We have heard about moisture expelled, which is over a 24-hour period, and gets absorbed by skin and materials in masks. We have heard about the risks of vaccines, which are in fact very rare and specifically triggered by hormones and pre-existing conditions. I am not, again, not opposed to unmasking, but I do not understand the recklessness with which it is being implemented."
Thank you, Laura. Another write-in is from David Walker at 4 Candlewood Drive. "I'm writing to voice support for continued masking in Pittsford schools." He cites a recent study showed greatly reduced vaccine effectiveness in children ages five to 11. This is especially concerning for those of us with younger children who are not yet eligible for the vaccine. We have a newborn at home, and I'm very concerned about the increased likelihood of school transmission." Another write-in submission, Annalise Johnson. "I know many, many parents who have reached out to the superintendent with concerns and questions and even resorted to a petition who still haven't heard their questions answered or been responded to and engaged with. Here is my email from several days ago, which didn't receive a reply. I've become very used to a lack of responses, particularly regarding DEI, a value we're supposed to share, and making progress in supporting students is adversely impacted as a result. There are vulnerable families and kids who again seem to be ignored for the comfort of some, a vocal 20% who have been ready for this for quite some time. This is a pattern of the district with issues of race and gender identity and now medical needs, a pattern of dismissal and disengagement. This isn't okay. This is an equity issue, and it should be done right. That midweek break email had many really concerning word choices indicating biases of the writers. I can share more feedback if you'd like to know what I saw. This unmasking change is a rushed timeline and not enough information about how to engage for families and engagements that have been largely ignored. Change is hard, and a good transition plan should in theory make that easier with information provided in advance of the change to all impacted people, all families and students, time for questions to be answered, and having all the information and time to process, and a way to bring up any additional concerns before the change occurs. A recorded Zoom meeting with question and answers would be a great start for parents to get this transition plan and ask questions, then giving families time to bring information to kids both from their teachers and their parents. If windows are going to be open, will they adjust seating for those with risks, et cetera? Also having a way to report risks, this is all going to fall on individual teachers, et cetera. What about middle school, high school kids who have several and pass during a crowded passing time? Again, not enough information, no clear plan to engage to assure safety. Waiting guidance from the governor isn't enough." Another write-in, Michael Delgado at 9 Chatham Woods. "I wish you good luck during what must be a difficult time. I also have some questions. Could you explain the reasoning behind dropping the mask mandate for activities like chorus when a temporary continuation of masking seems possible and prudent? How are the students being prepared for this shift and for the different approaches that families will take? Will the district be sending any guidance, any wording that will clarify for our kids why we're making this change, why it's necessary to do so now, and why it's safe? What is the district's approach to establishing the difference between shaming people for not wearing masks and having the right distance from them?" I think you've covered a lot of those, and with the guidance, there will be more. Kelly Galvin at 10 Concord Drive. "I'm writing about the new mask optional policy. I feel as if there are unanswered questions. What's the infection threshold that will trigger a masking policy again? How will this affect the test-to-stay policy? I was symptomatic but not too sick to work. For three days before I tested positive with no masks, students will not be protected from these infections but negative testing peers. What protections are in place for immunologically vulnerable students?" And the last one, I believe, CJ, you're here.
I timed this out at 2:45, and I shortened it, so if I run over, give me five seconds. I changed it a little bit based on what someone had said. Dear Mike and the board, I'm very pleased that the mask mandate ends in our schools tomorrow. I want to give credit where it's due. I've been critical of you people in the past. I want to give credit where it's due, and I want to give you credit for that now. I'd like to speak about a couple of things that were brought up by people who are still scared of this, and it's reasonable to be scared. We have been, it's a scary thing, it's a terrifying thing, and people remain scared. The truth is that we have not, we are the 49th state in the Union to drop a general mask mandate. This isn't happening in a vacuum. We are the 49th state to drop a mask mandate. Only Hawaii is after us, okay? So those who are worried that we're doing it too soon, or doing it recklessly, or doing it carelessly, we have the combined experience of 48 other states, some of which have sent kids to school for a year and a half without masks, okay? With excellent results, excellent safety results. There's a world of evidence out there that supports this. We are behind the curve, we are not ahead of the curve. That's just the worldwide fact. That's the facts. People haven't dropped dead because kids haven't worn masks in other states. It simply hasn't happened. And it's scary, and it's something that a lot of people need to come around to, but it's true. Now, I'm going to take on faith the number 900 pediatric COVID deaths in the United States, and any pediatric death, I'm a physician, I've lost, I take care of adults, I've lost half a dozen or so patients to COVID. It's terrible. They're all older, they're all older folks, but even still. I don't want to diminish any death, I don't want to diminish any COVID death. I certainly don't want to diminish any pediatric death. But there are 75 million children in the United States. Somewhere between 200 and 500 children die from the flu every year in the United States. We don't shut down society for influenza, nor should we. We've been doing this for two years. Other places have shed some of these restrictions. Other places have shed some of these restrictions faster than us. They're doing well. You're doing the right thing. You're doing the right thing. It's hard, it's painful, some folks are ready, some folks are not. The last thing I would say is this, and then I'll stop, is that there is trauma from keeping kids home. We know that now, you know that. There's trauma from not seeing somebody's face. Those are not insignificant. So, I want to thank you for what you're doing and I want to encourage you to stay the course. You're doing the right thing. Thank you.
And our final comment is Eric Koeman.
All right, Eric Koeman, 118 Woodgrain. Yeah, I want to thank you for bringing up the code of conduct, changing the code of conduct and actually addressing the fact that that will be shared with the students tomorrow. I think that's a really big milestone and good progress for the district covering shaming and health privacy, so thank you for that. I just wasn't, I wasn't planning to talk, but I felt compelled like I had to, just to share the fact that for two years, we've been putting our faith in the CDC, New York State Health Department, our governor, and it's been totally okay. We're one of the most conservative states in the country, 49th state to go maskless and have that option. And with high vaccine rates that we talk about, this is all we followed for two years. We have a survey that you thoughtfully put out to the community, get their input that supports this move. Two weeks ago, we were told that this is coming, so it's not really a surprise. And we even have new advice and mandates that support mask choice from these institutions. Everywhere our kids go outside of school, nearly everywhere, I should say, they have the mask choice. The only place that they potentially didn't have it is here in school. It's about time that our school matches not only what the CDC is recommending and our state is recommending, but what you have taken the courage to follow and recommend as well. Why is that guidance no longer good for people when it's been good for us for two years? So, that's a question I have for the whole district and I thank the board for taking the step and following the guidance. Thank you.
That's it. Yep.
I want to thank those that wrote in and for everyone that spoke today. I think the one takeaway I would ask for everyone in here and everyone that's watching is to see and feel and experience the different emotions from different people. That's, it doesn't matter what you think about this because it's your feelings and it's your thoughts and we need to deal with it as a district. So, in here, we, I think we had 12 people talking about the masking, wanting to keep it, and another 12 saying, we don't want to keep it and that can keep perpetuating. The reality is tomorrow, we're going to start mask optional. We are going to do our diligence in keeping students and our facilities safe. The biggest thing that we can do as a community is come together here. I just got, I thought I got my three minutes taken away. The biggest thing we can do is stick together as a community. I would ask that. I would say, I don't even, I don't appreciate looking out and seeing someone speaking and someone rolling their eyes. It's not showing empathy. I really, tomorrow, when school starts, I'm going to ask for kids to be empathetic. In order for kids to be empathetic, their parents need to support that. So, I'm really hoping to goodness that we can make this, help us become more together than divided. And thank you all for your investment for coming out this evening. Thanks for those that had the courage to speak tonight. Thanks for those that wrote in. We're going to get through this and I just hope that we can get through this in a real healthy way together. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
I have Ted and Sarah all in favor. Opposed? Motion carried. Have a nice night, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.